I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, October 5th, 2015 at 7:30. To order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of agenda. Any additions or deletions?
We need to add, I don't see garbage pickup day of week change.
Thank you. Any other additions or deletions, please?
If there's no other changes, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with the one addition of 20 new business, see garbage pickup day of change.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Number three, public comments. Are there any public comments at this time? No public comments. Approval minutes, 9:08, 2015, 9:29, 2015.
Actually, 9:28, 2015.
Correction on the agenda, 9:28, 2015.
If there's no questions or changes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 9:08, 2015, and 9:28, 2015.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Sheriff's report. I do not have a sheriff's report. Fire Department report, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Two things I just want to bring up that are separate from the reports, and it's more for the public's knowledge. Yesterday, nationwide, we kicked off Fire Prevention Week, and this year's campaign is hear the beep where you sleep, so we're really pushing for everyone to put smoke detectors in their bedrooms, not just in the hallway, but in their bedrooms. And yesterday, we did hold our open house to kick off Fire Prevention Week here in the township, and we had, even with the weather conditions we had yesterday, I know a lot of you were there yesterday, we had a great turnout. We figure well over 200 people, and so, just glad that you guys could make it, and really good turnout. We had a lot of people that were not even from the area, and they had a lot of really good questions on, as you saw, we had the dump takeout, a few other things that we don't normally have out, so it went really, really well. Item number two is another, it is actually in my report, but I wanted to bring it up publicly, is on September 26th, our department, in conjunction with Richmond Lenox EMS, the State Department of Corrections, and the prison staff, we held a multi-agency drill that involved a mock fire with trapped victims at the state prison, and we had our second alarm mutual aid departments, Ray Township, Ira Township, Chesterfield Township, and New Baltimore also participated. We had approximately 45 first responders on the scene, we spent about two hours there, and it went really, really well, and we did, we learned a lot, you never can learn enough, we also learned a lot of things that we needed to address, and so it was a very successful drill, though. And I thank all of our mutual aid departments and Jeff's crew, it went really, really well, so I just wanted to let you know and let the public know, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Good job, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. EMS report. Shall I?
I emailed out my report earlier today, if there's any questions, you can receive and file.
Thank you, sir. DPW report.
Received and filed, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Code Enforcement report.
Michigan Lake Control Commission reports had been filed in my office.
Thank you. Assessing Department report. Any questions? Move right along. Engineers report.
Good evening. Just want to touch base on an email that I sent this morning to the board about the old hall improvements. I believe everybody received it. Just basically breaking out the three options that we're looking at, this is only for discussion purposes right now. The board asked me at last meeting to put some construction and design estimates together for improvements of the hall. Basically, we have three options for the bathrooms, isolating them from the rest of the building, and actually, I did meet with a contractor, a builder, and it's very hard to estimate at this point, so these are conservative numbers. Once we know the scope and our architectural plans are developed, they'll give us a more detailed cost estimates. So we're looking for almost $75,000 to put the two bathrooms and isolate them from the old building. The major thing is the plumbing, because we have to bust all that concrete and to go all the way to the corner and restore everything back, and also isolate that area from the rest. The old buildings are, they need a little bit of work per the new code, so they're more into it than originally estimated. This architectural number, 3500, the architect, he works under us, so I had him give us an estimate how much it's going to cost as far as cycling and developing engineering costs, the engineering plans. Now, option two is option one, which is basically the old sheriff and building's bargain into the two bathrooms, and then reconfiguring the kitchen, the existing kitchen with the meeting area. So they'll, we'll be opening both areas together and rehabbing the kitchen, and that's an additional 20, we figured. Option number three, which basically option one and two, plus converting the old meeting room and the front offices into the garage, so it's going to be overhead, and then we go all the way to the end, and then we relocate the meeting room to the old supervisor deputy clerk deputy area. It's a smaller configuration, but, so we're basically moving everything to the west side. And that's the most, that's almost $125. So basically, just wanted to give you an idea, if the board likes to proceed with that, just give us the go-ahead later on, and we will devote the plans with the architect and send them out for bid.
I want to thank you, I want to thank you for this, and in the next couple of months, we'll probably put on the agenda one way or another to see what to do with it. This came in so late today.
I just wanted to have the board to have something tonight for discussion, for future discussions. And if there are no other questions on my report, I will ask for receiving files, please.
Thank you, Mr. Safe. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Library report. Lenix Township Library Summer Reading Program was a great success. Children from ages zero to four read 104 books. Students from kindergarten through grade six completed 189 books. Teens from grade seven up read a total of 90, read a total of 94 books, and our adult readers completed 67 books. We had a grand total of 454 books read by our library patrons. Our annual haunted library is scheduled for Saturday, October 24th, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. If you are interested in being frightened to death, come join us. The Library's Children Halloween Party will be held on Saturday, October 31st, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. All are welcome. Beginning and early October, running through 2015-16 school year, Lenix Township Library will be offering tutoring for all students. This program will be available Monday through Thursday. Please call the library for more details. And the phone number for the library is 586-749-3430. Senior Center report. I can't hear you, Jack.
New calendar.
Okay. Does everybody have a copy of this? Please excuse me till I have trouble with my throat.
Maybe you could make mention of the giving back. Does she want me to?
Sure, I'll be able to. If you'd like to read it, that'd be great.
Just, yeah. Because you're drunk.
My throat, my throat, thank you.
Involved with the Lenox seniors and her newsletter, she mentions giving back. Too many times, children are affected by issues that make it necessary for them to be put into the foster care system. Most times, these placements are done on an emergency basis, and the children have nothing except the clothes they are wearing. Did you know that you can help? The very simple act of providing a toothbrush and/or a small tube of toothpaste could mean a lot. If you could take a moment when you go to the dentist or the dollar store, pick up an extra toothbrush, and donate it in the senior center to help a child being placed in foster care, let's see how many we can collect for donations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Supervisor report. Just like to make mention, we did have a citizen report of suspicious vehicle running pipe into one of our waterways, so I'd like everybody to kind of be aware, if they see a vehicle doing anything out of the ordinary by any of our waterways, please let us know, call the sheriff department. They told the resident that they were filling their tank with water, but we contacted the health department, and they're looking into it. We got a name of the vehicle, and we're going to go follow up on it, but just stuff to be aware of that we usually don't see. Also, it is start of hunting season. Be mindful of the deer as you drive around, and be mindful of going out in the woods. Please wear bright colors and distinguish yourself from the animals. And also, community dinner. Do you remember the date on that?
20th, I believe.
I believe it's the 20th, at the New Haven High School.
Friday before Thanksgiving.
Friday before Thanksgiving. Thank you.
I think it's in the newsletter, isn't it?
Do you?
Yeah, New Haven Lenox Community Dinner, Friday, November 20th, at New Haven High School. Doesn't have a time, but it's.
I believe it's 6 o'clock. Thank you. Treasurer report.
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Orders and bills, please.
It was so early in the month, there were some bills that came in after Karen had closed out. The new total is $233,655.98. Thank you.
Those were nothing out of the ordinary that we don't just. This was an extra Frontier. I had Frontier on here, and another Frontier bill came in, and then I think it was our life insurance.
Life insurance.
Policy, and also, we didn't want that to go.
The EMS gave us one for the new pads for the defibrillator, right?
Yes.
And then the high-tech monthly.
And Jeff, speaking of that, something came up today. Kathy was asking me, we put like the fuel that the guys use, and your monthly, I don't know, pay, and those pads all on one. Does that value you on your end? Do you have to separate anything from life, or not?
Yeah, no, as long as it's, you know, as long as it's outlined on that second half of the check that says what the different funds are for, then we do it, we can just post the, you know, post the check and post those amounts to the proper accounts.
Okay. I know some people.
If it's on the same check, it'll all, it'll all work out just fine.
Okay.
If that's easier for you, that works fine for us.
Well, we weren't, you know, you never said anything about it, and Kathy brought it to my attention today, and I said, well, he's never said anything, because we, well, that probably wouldn't do that.
Yeah, no, no, we get a lot of checks that like from SMART, different things, that the check has to be kind of separated and posted to different accounts in the accounting system, you know, once you receive it.
Good.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the orders and bills at a total of $233,655.98.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Churchy?
Aye.
Ottenbacher? Aye. Keith?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Trustees' report. Trustee Churchy, please.
I have nothing other than what we're covering on later in the, in under new business. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk's report.
We're finally coming up on the November school election, so that'll be the day after the meeting next month, and that is for remaining schools.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and file all reports.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Thank you. Unfinished business. Letter A, Detroit Water and Sewers Department, TWST, and Great Lakes Water Authority, GLWA Mr. Joppick.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. This item was on your agenda on September 8th. It was taken up by the board, the board passed a motion to approve the agreement for the assignment stating with this, where the board said, would this approval void if a more favorable agreement is available? At this point, I can report that Attorney Sorella from my office attended the meeting that was discussed at your meeting with Supervisor Trombley, received the information. We understand that attorneys for some of the other communities are looking into some issues. We haven't heard back from them yet, so at this point, there really is no more favorable agreement available. We don't know if there ever will be. What I suggest is that this be removed from the future agendas. You've approved it and given us direction if it needs to come back at some point in time. For example, if there's a more favorable agreement, we'll bring that forward to the future agenda if it ever arises.
I would like to clarify one thing, Mr. Jeff. The letter from the, that we did receive for you to attend that, we're ahead, about the time that also?
Yes, that is a letter talking about the establishment of a county water authority. We don't know all the details of that, they're proposing holding a meeting. The county is proposing holding a meeting to discuss that concept of bringing the communities of Macoma County together to establish a water authority. We'll learn more about that. Attorney Sorella issued a report to the board, I hope everybody received that on the results. The last meeting, we'll do the same with this meeting, we'll attend.
Yep.
And report back to the board if there are any further developments. If it is already were to be proposed, it would be under an agreement, and that would be something that would come back to this, more than discussable.
Just so as everybody's clear, we're not signing it at this time.
That's correct. The board's approval was to approve the agreement and authorize the supervisor to sign it as necessary to satisfy any approval deadline.
Correct.
I believe that that a deadline is not for a couple months yet.
Okay. I just wanted a clarification on that, so.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion to remove this item from the agenda to be brought back if necessary.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Plumbing mechanical inspector and backup inspector hired. Attorney Joppick.
Yes, this is an item that, following your last meeting, we have looked into some information concerning it. We will be proceeding with providing some further advice and internal deals to follow up on the matter, and we will report back to the board in the future, so I would ask at this point if this matter could be postponed again to a future meeting.
I make a motion to remove this item from the agenda to be brought back if necessary.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Macoma Area Communities for Regional Opportunities Macro Membership Request.
Steve, did you have a chance to look over that stuff on that?
I did not. I received it just recently, and have not had a chance to look over it. I believe there was an agreement with it.
Yeah, I mean, that was the only issue that we had last month, was that we just wanted it to be looked over before we signed into it, you know, knowing that it's no cost, but there was some legality stuff in there that just, I wanted to be on the safe side.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't recognize that.
No problem.
That we needed to look into some specific issues. We'll pull that out, take a look at that, and report back.
I make a motion to table the Macoma Area Communities for Regional Opportunities Macro Membership Request until next month.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Letter D, employee compensation.
Okay, I put together a spreadsheet on everything that, as I remembered it, in my notes. So the questions would be, well, a couple of things first. There's some I sense in here, and so I'd like to bump those. Kathy Honold up to $18.20 from $18.17, bump that 3 cents. Carol Swiatek up to $15.90 from $15.86, again, bumping it up to near as 5 cents. And then Veronica bumping it from $8.56 to $8.60.
Now, would we do that again in January, or would we do that in '35?
Then it's going to be a 35 cent.
Oh, so it's going to take 2 cents, never mind. Long moment.
What we talked about was a 5% for those that have not received, a raise over the last.
Aye.
Since 2006.
Since 2006, and then in January, the minimum wage is going to jump again by 35 cents, so in January, we would do across the board 35 cents. This does not include the board members, this is just the employees. We also talked about the insurance stipend, raising that 10% for those that do not take We also talked about Amy Flood being placed as the manager position in the building department at $12 per hour and not filling her position, so it would be a one-person office. We also talked about having Veronica be the backup for that department, so she would know how to do permits and help if there was ever a reason that Amy couldn't be here, whether it be vacation, sick time, or what have you. The only thing we did not talk about was bumping Veronica up for taking on those duties. And I would almost like to say bump it to either $8.75 or $9.
I think it should be a minimum of $9 if those duties are going to come into play. Also, too, I want to clarify under whose supervision she'll be under in the building department.
She would still fall under Karen. She works for the township, and that's the same thing with the building department. So she works for the township, she works for the board. The building department reports to.
Why she's working in the building department?
Because we need a person there.
No, I understand that, but I'm supposed to be overseeing the building department. If she's under my supervision while she's there, then I don't oversee her.
I don't think it really matters who she reports to on a day-to-day basis to do the job, though.
Well, it does.
But that's not going to be a regular thing, is it? She's just going to be helping out there or doing extra duties while she's at the front, so it's getting nitpicky if we start separating so many hours, if she's under your supervision, so many hours she's under Karen's, it's.
Well, that's done now with employees, with their departments.
Her pay would still be coming out of the general services. We didn't talk about having that come out of the building department, she's the backup.
Well, it should come out of the building department if she's working under the building department at that time, that's where it should come out of. That's a cost incurred there.
But it sounds like she's just going to be a backup if needed. That's, yeah, that was almost. Just like at other businesses, if somebody is sick or has to leave for a while, somebody else in the office comes for that, but they don't get compensated for a half an hour of doing that job versus that job.
Veronica works with all of the offices.
Right.
She does not take her time, and doesn't take how many hours with clerk, how many hours with assessing or any of the others.
It should be separated, in my opinion.
Well, there's other departments that we're not doing that with. Patrick works for the DPW, and none of his pay comes out of the DPW, so.
We also talked about Veronica doing the water billing, and there was a question that you talked to the auditors. Was a call made to the auditors? And what?
It does not imply that, so the length of the email, it does not imply that, checked every day.
It's funny, because I talked to him Thursday, he told me he was sending an email.
Should we schedule that this morning?
I didn't see the email, but I did speak with him, and he talked to the MTA, and it is really not any of our statutory duties, but all the communities that he's involved with, the treasurer's offices where the bills are generated, and he said he was going to send an email, and I said, well, would you please make sure that we all see it?
I bet you will.
Thursday afternoon. Okay, I'll call in tomorrow.
And that's something the audit's coming up, so I'm just waiting for that time, too. Another thing that we also talked about was changing the board review pay from a per diem to an hourly rate that is also on this. So with that said, make a motion.
I did have one question, though.
Okay.
Okay, because I know we talked about it, okay? Now, we talked about raising Amy because she's taking on all the duties, and we raised another employee to bring them up to closer to a similar position. And we raised another employee to bring them up to closer to a similar position. But we're giving that employee that raise plus the five percent, whereas we're not giving that to Amy.
What employee?
Jeanette.
I can answer the question.
I can't, I know we talked about it, and you said you wanted to bring her up to closer to the range, but that's not really.
What's your question regarding that?
I didn't know if we decided that we were just going to give her the two dollars or the two plus the five percent. Whereas we only did Amy the two.
One hundred five percent was the two dollars plus the five percent.
Amy did the five percent plus the two. Right there.
I remember it is in the five percent, so that's why I put it on there.
We did put Amy's in, okay.
And Amy was just bringing her up to twelve dollars. That's what I had in mind.
Yeah, so I'm just like, is that fair to Amy? Because you're bringing her, you're bringing her to another position and raising her because of that, but she's losing out on basically her five percent raise that everybody else is getting.
Right, but she'll be getting thirty-five cents in January.
Right.
And Amy's coming in, yeah, she's taking on a new position, so she got a bump for that.
Okay.
As for the five percent on top of that, because it's a brand-new, it's a new position for her.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I know we talked about it back and forth.
Are you saying she's not getting the five percent then?
Right, she's getting, she's getting raised to twelve dollars an hour, but not the five percent. But she would have, she will get the thirty-five cents in January.
In the other situation, I thought we were just raising it to get it closer. I didn't realize it was like two raises in line.
The way you talked about it, it was more.
Okay.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the raise structure presented with these changes. Veronica going up to nine dollars per hour. Kathy Honold being bumped three cents up to eighteen twenty, I mean, three cents from what we had on here. Carol being bumped four cents from what is on here to fifteen ninety. And the thirty-five cents in January. The ten percent insurance stipend bump. And have this be effective actually today, because yesterday was the close of the pay period. Did I miss anything?
The board review, do you have that?
And the board of review going to an hourly rate of eighteen dollars as opposed to a per diem amount. Every, as presented, because it's all on here.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Now, the only thing I do want to point out, the total cost of the township, and I just did the raise, the raises times the amount of hours worked in a year. This raise is going to cost us nineteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. And the thirty-five cents in January will cost an additional six thousand seven hundred and forty-two. So that's just for information purposes.
But even though those raises have been a huge reduction in the building department cost, as far as cost.
They were quite ways over their revenues, so hopefully they'll bring it in line.
Okay, letter E, employee healthcare renewal.
I think this was put on here just because we were told that we were going to have something in October. Jeanette said that she still has not heard from him, so we will have to act on this in November, because the new year starts in January, the new policy will start in January, so that it'll be a January through December annual policy.
Jeanette?
Good evening. Michael wanted to know if you wanted to possibly have a workshop, a discussion group towards the end of the month to go over anything that you might have questions on once he gets the rates.
I would just like to see the rates, I really do not want to do another workshop.
I'd like to see the rates from him then if we have to, after that, if there's still some confusion, then we call him out if we have to.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion that we table the employee healthcare renewal until the November meeting.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. New business, Michigan vehicle code by reference. Turn to Joppick.
Yes, thank you. This is a proposed ordinance amendment, or, I apologize, not an amendment. It is ordinance proposing to adopt the Michigan vehicle code. Right now, the township has adopted the Uniform Traffic Code. This is a more comprehensive vehicle code that is adopted by reference. It is a state law, and according to the state laws, the township can adopt an ordinance where it incorporates those state statutes as its ordinances. And it enables the sheriff's department to enforce them as township ordinances on the streets and roads throughout the township, and as the cases proceed to be prosecuted, they would be prosecuted as township cases as opposed to state law cases. And as you know, the sheriff's department is contracted to provide traffic enforcement for the township. This would enable those fees to be the fees that are paid for traffic violations and other motor vehicle violations to come a hundred percent to the township, which would, depending on how many tickets are written, of course, and how things proceed, would help to offset the costs of the sheriff's contract. So the ordinance has been provided to you, and if you don't have any questions, you can proceed with adoption this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just had a question for Karen and Jody. When we do receive those fees, is there a special line item they have to go into? Or are they received under like the sheriff, like they just kind of credit on the sheriff's bill?
Yeah, fines, just reimbursement for fines and ordinances. And I'll be quite honest, it used to be a pretty good-sized check. Now, they don't go after them anymore like they used to. It used to help tremendously and they wrote a lot of tickets. Now, it seems like they're not writing tickets because people don't show up for court and the guys don't think it's worth going in and fighting.
It was sizable amount, like you're saying.
We used to get a very good chunk.
But is there limitations on what that money can be used for? Because I know if things come in for recreation, they have to be used for, you know, with the reimbursement, what did we use it for, just put it in their general fund?
Okay. And the reason we don't get the fees like we used to is because Larry King is no longer with us.
He used to go out, Larry King used to go out and. Stop the pavement and get us some good, you know, but not anymore.
Thank you. I'll make the motion that we adapt the Michigan vehicle code.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Master plan review proposal.
Okay, quite a few months ago, we started talking about updating the master plan, which is a requirement by the state that the planning commission at least look at and somewhat update. They don't have to completely change the plan. We talked at the planning commission level, we talked about it at the board level. And my understanding was it was approved, but I didn't realize we had to get. I know we approved it in the budget, but I didn't realize I had to get specific direction that we get started at the planning commission. At the planning commission level, what we did was the original amount had been, had come up to like thirty-eight thousand dollars. We looked at it and said, "We don't," at this time, we felt we didn't need to do three parts of it because it was too extensive. We haven't had that much change, we don't foresee that much change in the near future. You know, we'll glance at, like the land use plan, we'll glance at the Gresham corridor, but we didn't feel we needed a market study, you know, a thorough, you know, study at this time. A majority of, a lot of this cost is going into the wetland mitigation, which is like doing a whole new ordinance. And that's something that a lot of, well, all the planning commission members and a lot of residents have been concerned with because in the last few months, we were kind of bombarded with wetlands. And though those are great, we don't want our entire township to be wetlands, so we want more regulation on it. How much do we have to have here? And stuff like that. So that's why, you see that on the list of quite a bit. So, but like I said, we took out three items, the most expensive items, and we brought it down to twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, which I'd like approval to get going on that. If we want to back up, so last year, we did proposals for planners. We interviewed planners, we hired Burschler, Arroyo, and Associates. Our feelings then and now, especially at the planning commission level, are that we want to continue working with Dave Burschler and his crew, and we want to do the master plan through him because they are very educated on what we have here, what we've been through, and what we may see in the future, so.
Sit.
Also part of this is the public input, the online surveys and public open house, which is mandatory part of the process, and there's a big chunk, you know, there as well, but it's part of the process that we have to do to get the master plan updated.
I might as well speak to this right now. My concern was, the initial concern of thirty-eight thousand dollars, that that was, in my opinion, astronomical cost for a master plan that's very, going to change very little, hardly, hardly no change. And I discussed it with the Trustee Churchy about seeing what the cost would be from the county. At one time, we heard that that was part of their fees of roughly nine hundred dollars. I would like that followed up on, especially when we still are looking at a bill of twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and we could see significant savings here, especially when we're counting pennies every day. From something to go to thirty-eight thousand to twelve thousand eight fifty, I have concern about that.
And I explained what we did was, we took out, let me see if I have the open close of.
I understand clearly what you did.
Were you making it sound like just because we spoke up?
I'm not making it sound, I'm making it sound like did anybody recheck with the county for cost after it was discussed.
We did not, we checked with the county, we talked about hiring the county when we interviewed for planners.
I understand.
Our planner is Burschler, Arroyo Associates. We pay them a monthly fee. The county, even if we just gave them nine hundred dollars to do the master plan, they would, that cost would probably go up, because they know really nothing about our ordinances, because we're just a little township in Macomb County.
My argument is that doesn't give somebody card block to send in a bill for thirty-eight thousand dollars and then start whittling it down. I think it's something that we should check on, no matter who we hire. If we see a bill that comes in manners outrageous, and there's, what does it hurt to check? When there could be significant savings, because I hear a lot that, hey, we don't have the money, we don't have the money all the time. And when we're looking at savings like that, why wouldn't we check? Why wouldn't we get just a response from them? What would it hurt to ask them what they would charge for that, to be done, that service to be provided from us? I just, I don't see where it would hurt. How do we know?
We need to do it now, and we didn't hire the county as our planner.
No, we didn't.
We disagreed with hiring the county for our planner. We hired Dave Burschler Associates. We didn't hire the county as our planner.
I'm very aware of that.
And this is our planner.
I'm very aware of that.
This is our planner.
I don't like how we reiterate, I don't think that gives somebody card block to send us a bill.
He did not send us a bill for thirty-eight thousand. They sent us a proposal of what could be done.
Correct.
And part of that was, that was before we, as a planning commission, said, "We don't feel we need to do this extensive degree." But if they did not propose it, and we could have looked at it and said, "Well, what about this? And what about that?" And then they could have said later, "Well, you want to do that, it's going to be this much more. If you want to do that, it's going to be that much more." So as a whole, the planning commission and Dave's company looked at items and said, "No, we don't need a retail market study. No, let's just look at the Gresham land use corridor. No, we don't need a town center study." Those were big issue items, a big money issues because of the extent of the work that needed to be done. So that's how we got it down to twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, which I think is a very fair thing if you look at everything that's been doing, because.
Compared to what? That's my only response.
You look at the wetland, just the wetlands issue. If you take those out, that's how much we would have ended up paying plus, if you look at two, two C, two D, four, and seven, those things could have been just done separately, and then it would have been, would have cost us that much just to do that ordinance, which has to be done, because we don't want to get overrun with it. But it incorporated it right into this, so it cuts the cost down on those, but it gets what's done, what's needed to get done, what's required to get done.
And the wetland mitigation was something that we actually asked for at the board level.
And I have no issue with that, I understand that clearly. I'm just going back initially, and I'm not saying Dave is doing a bad job, I think he's doing a fine job. But what I stated in the meeting was that I thought his prices were going to be very expensive, we were shopping prices, and this is, I see no reason why it shouldn't be checked on, but I'm just voicing my concern.
Make a motion that we approve the master plan update through clear zoning at a cost of twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, which twelve thousand dollars is already budgeted for this six counts.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Letter E, waste management, trash and recycling, damp service change request. I did speak to Pat Greavy today. I did voice my concern, and I believe I've seen an email from Clerk Keith. I know myself, I hate change, especially with something like my trashers have to call. I'm set and doing it noisy. Mr. Greavy's concern was they are changing some of their routes. If we keep ours the same, and he's asking us if we would consider this change. If we refuse to change, they are going to have to lay off numerous guys, is what I'm being told. And if we do not decide to do this also today, he's asking that we reschedule this and let him come in and speak to it with us. Once again, I hate any change for our residents, once they get on. Once again, I hate interchange for residents once they get on the cycle. And it's working well. I voiced my concern to Pat. I understand. What I also do, I sure don't want to see anybody lose their job. It's hard enough times out there and I don't see any, I don't want to see any families not having an income. So that's, that's my opinion of it.
My biggest concern on this was, they wanted to implement it a lot earlier than this October 20th. I mean, it was like tomorrow. And as someone that has gone through changing, and this is what I put in the email, changing places. We changed from voting down at the DPW to up here. How many years ago, Carol?
Many.
Many. Every single resident, registered voter got a notice in the mail long before. To this day, we are still getting people that come in here and say, seriously. To this day, it's been like 10 years. How come I was never notified that you changed from the DPW? I went to the DPW. And it's like, seriously, that was 10 years ago that we moved and it's been up here. So going through that, I know that this is, you know, another, it's the same type of thing. Now, it was stated that...
They would do back-to-back days to try to alleviate that problem with us, to try and wean people off of the Wednesday to a new day. And like you said, if it's something that we're not considering today, he would just like the opportunity to come in and talk to us a little more. He's assured me they would put safeguards in place so there wouldn't be an inconvenience to our residents. And that's, I know that's mine and the deputy supervisor's main concern is servicing the residents.
Absolutely.
They, and yours, and all of ours, that they get serviced properly and notice gets out proper, in proper time and things of that nature.
But like they said, I would like, I agree, I would like to see a postcard go out. Even if somebody says, how come I was never notified? We can also put it on the website. It might not hurt. And this is a question for waste management, putting some kind of notice in the voice for a couple of weeks.
Mr. Greevey handles that, and I think that, so I'd have to contact him and speak to him regarding that.
I don't have a problem with changing the date. I understand the logistics of it and why it needs to happen.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure our residents are notified and notified and watching and capable and being notified.
No matter how much information you get out there, you put in the paper, we send postcards, you're still going to have those people who are going to say, I didn't know that.
Absolutely.
We have not been open on a Friday for, oh my God, for many, many years here. And we still get people that come in and say, I was here Friday and you weren't here. It's printed on their tax bill. They don't log. So we need some time definitely to get these people this information. So I say we probably do need this gentleman to come in and...
Keith's more than willing to come in and speak to us about it and figure out the logistics with us so that it's a smooth transition.
We're going to be the bad guys, whatever we decide here. We're going to be the bad guys. And so we need to talk to somebody to tell us how to get through this.
Okay, so, but are you saying we have them come to the November meeting so that again, it's on cable? And let them start November first? I mean, they're doing this for a reason and I understand their reason.
Well, right now, every Tuesday, they're sending people home because there's not enough work on those days. If we begin on, let me explain. This would be the postcard that would go out to every single resident that's receiving trash and recycling pickup. Right now, our days are Wednesday. If somebody gets missed or their trash cart gets taken with the truck, with the trash, I don't get that call until Thursday. And then I turn around and either send an email or make a phone call, usually both, to the route supervisor. I don't hear back until Monday whether that's done or not. Whether they received it, whether it's being addressed. Sometimes I get notified on Wednesday or Thursday that he'll take care of it. A lot of times, I don't get notified until Monday.
Because they have to wait for that individual to know.
Right. Waste management does not, it's not the route supervisor who's turning in carts or passing those out to residents. They have another company that does it. And so I email the route supervisor, the route supervisor emails that company, and then it gets on the list. Also, if we go to Tuesday, which is the date they're proposing, I would still get the call now on Wednesday. They'd have Wednesday and I'd be able to follow up on Thursday before the weekend. It just, it makes, it seems to, it would go smoother. And I'd be able to get feedback back from residents a lot quicker, or to the residents a lot quicker. Sending out the postcards, this would be up to waste management. They would drop it up at every single house. The first week that they implement this, they would pick up on Tuesday. They would also pick up on Wednesday. The next week, they would pick up on Tuesday. And then they would wait till Friday and pick everybody up that they meant, that put it out on Wednesday. That should generate a few phone calls to either here or to waste management. And then those people would say, well, I didn't get notified. And we could tell them, yes, you did. And inform them again of the new date. And then the third week, it would just be on Tuesday.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with changing the date. I would, like, like you said, though, it was like, okay, there wasn't enough notification. There was no notification. Before I left the house, I told my son, drag this stuff out because we're changing the date. But as soon as I found out, I read this letter, find out we won't. I'm like, Kevin, don't, don't do it, you know, because we had some stuff. So, yeah, if you give the couple of weeks like that and word gets out and the way they're going to do it, it's not that big of a deal that you change it from Wednesday to Tuesday. I think we're spending way too much time on a non-issue.
In the end, I don't want them to have to wait until they come in, can come in and talk to us next month. If this is what they need to do to do business.
So what are you suggesting?
I suggest go ahead and let them, knowing that they're going to send the cards out. Because this is going to start the week of the 20th, so...
Right, and I was told all they need from us is a complete list of all the residents, the addresses. And I can get that through assessing and I can give that to them by the end of the week so they can start working on their end and how many carts they need to post and purchase.
And as long as we have a backup on that Wednesday, to make sure coverage is retrieved from residents that might necessarily not get the information or something.
And the recycling schedule will stay the same. You know, it'll still be every other week, but it will be Tuesday instead of Wednesday.
And the only other thing?
We can still have him come in to, to address. If we approve it, we can still have him come in and speak to us.
If that, if you have any other questions?
What's it need for, though?
If you have any other questions, we can, I can write him an email to him and Pat can send it back to everyone as reply.
There's no question. It's whether you want it Tuesday or Wednesday. And we just said Tuesday. I'll make a motion that we authorize our trash pickup to be changed to Tuesday instead of Wednesday as proposed by waste management and outlined in their email.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion?
Or just add that the new change would be ineffective the week of October 19th.
I support the change amendment to your motion.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Twenty-one. Public comments. Are there any public comments at this time? No public comments.
I make a motion to adjourn at 8:30.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer Anthebacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Being adjourned.